Ready?
That's fine.
You all ready? Welcome, everybody, to tonight's city council meeting. Appreciate you all being here. Before we get started, I want to let everyone know that tonight's meeting is being broadcasted live through KLYC and recorded through McMinnville Community Media for later broadcast. And as such, as a courtesy to those watching at home and everyone in the audience, if you could please silence your cell phones so there won't be any interruptions, I'd appreciate it. Before we start, we're going to have Larry Yoder is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Yoder. We always dedicate time at these meetings for any public comment, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council about anything that is, excuse me, a topic that is not on the agenda or may be coming up later as a matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearings at a future date, if you do not have any of those conflicts, then you're free to come and speak to us about anything that's on your mind. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Please. Please sign in as you come up. Thank you.
My name is Doug Johnson. I live at 1642 Northwest Yon Ranch Drive. Members of council, city manager, members of the city employees. As you probably know, I've been coming to these meetings for the last, I don't know, six, seven, eight months. And thank you for making it such a welcoming place. I feel that you've created an environment here where citizens can come and express themselves freely and comfortably. And so I wanted to say thank you for that. Last, two weeks ago, you, as one of your items, you had the 2015 goals and objectives that you had laid out through your planning meeting. And there was, not that they weren't all important, but one caught my attention, and that was the second goal, which was communicating with citizens and key local partners. And that was expanded from community partners, gather information, and understand the questions to ask and actions the city or partners can take. Splendid. The county, Yamhill County and the city of McMinnville have undergone radical demographic changes in the last 30 years. Those of you who have lived here for that long know those changes very well. The Latino population in McMinnville is now better than 20%. If we look at primary school demographics, we might anticipate that Latino population in McMinnville will grow to more than 30% in the years to come. And so, as we see that population grow, what's notable is that that part of our population, that part of our community, is not yet participating fully, for instance, in these gatherings. And I don't say that to be critical in any way, except to make an observation that, you know, 20 to 30% of our population does not feel yet that this is either relevant or comfortable, or, and there's a whole variety of reasons for that. I've had the splendid opportunity of engaging in conversation with our police chief, with the fire chief, with members of the city. And these are not issues that they are unaware of. In fact, Chief Scales has been quite open and frank with me about his desire, his vision to see the police department diversify. And then he's spoken, and that's come across very clearly in our conversations together. And so when I see learn from community partners, I say, that's awesome. And so I want to encourage or to advocate for the council being proactive even in trying to find and engage Latino partners so that they can become, grow into more active participants in our city. Because the participation is wider than just whether they're employees of the city, but whether they engage here, or whether they're members of the city's commissions or service clubs. I think we could look at all of those organizations and go, hmm, not representative of our community. And so I just raise this to join along with you in saying, this is great, and to advocate and encourage for a vision that would, in the next 10 to 20 years, see our community even become an awesome example around the state of a place that's known for racial integration, fantastic cross-the-board participation, excellent relationships. So I just want to kind of highlight that issue that I see for us going forward. And I thank you for creating this as a friendly place where I can come and bring that concern or interest of mine. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Before you leave, is there any comments or questions from the council? Larry? All right. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the council? All right, moving on. Up next, we have old business, the adoption of the minutes of the March 10, 2015 meeting. We have the minutes in your packet. Do we have any modifications or corrections to that? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Menke, second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the March 10 dinner meeting and regular council session have been approved. New minutes, reports from financial consultant Bob Wells on the 2015-16 proposed budget. So, Marsha, want to introduce Bob? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The last time we met was over the three-year forecast in January, and the city manager's now put together a recommended budget, which you'll be reviewing here shortly. And I think, you know, if you look at the, kind of stand back and look at the budget, it's a hold-the-line budget. I think there's very few additions to it, but there are expenditure stresses that are taking place since the forecast was presented that I think you should be cognizant of. So, in looking at the proposed budget and comparing that to the forecast, of course, the forecast is never going to be exactly right because it is a forecast, so there's always going to be differences. When you look at the beginning balance, the beginning balance is about $200,000 less than the proposed budget than it was estimated in the forecast. And that's just because the staff has had more time to go through and review assumptions regarding revenues and expenditures. Revenues are up about $327,000. Most of that is due to property taxes, that's about $184,000. And then there's other revenues like intergovernmental and transfers and permits that are slightly higher now than what we were estimated in January. On the other hand, fines are a little bit lower. When you look at expenditures, it looks like it's up about $133,000, but actually it's up more than that. And the reason is, is that one of the assumptions that's changed in the proposed updated forecast is that it's assumed that there'll be $1 million in savings at the end of the year, and the forecast had assumed $600,000. So really, there's about a $533,000 increase in expenditures. And if you start looking at the reasons for that, a lot of those have just been things that have occurred in the last several months. So, health insurance is one of the areas. It was projected to increase 4% when the rates came out from CIS. They're actually 12.7% increase this year. And if you look back historically, 4% is a good figure. This is just a year when there was more usage. So, the city manager's proposing some changes to the healthcare program, but the, be about $50,000 in next year's budget. The, there's a cost of living increase of 2.1% for police and general service employees. The fire union is still under negotiation. There's also special adjustments for those positions that are well behind the market, and the cost of that is about $105,000. The transfer to the ambulance fund is probably the biggest difference in the proposed budget and the forecast, and the increase amounts to $400,000 additional, $200,000 to offset differences between revenue and expenditures, and then another $200,000 to purchase an ambulance. And my understanding is another ambulance will need to be purchased a year from now. In addition to that, there's the addition of two part-time employees, purchase of two patrol cars, and $145,000 in deferred maintenance. So, it's very much a hold-the-line budget, but as you can see, there's some pressures that have built up in certain areas that are causing it to be a little different than you had in the forecast in January. So when you look at overall, how much do you have to generate in savings every year in order to maintain your reserve account? And as you may recall, the council has established a reserve account policy, that the reserve account will be 25% of expenditures, and right now you exceed that. So, the question is, if you want to maintain that reserve account and not eat into it, what kinds of savings do you have to generate? And the forecast assumes $1 million in savings, but in order to break even, you're going to have to generate between 1.4 and 1.9 million dollars of savings every year. And then the question becomes, is that a realistic road to follow? So, in looking for, you know, I always look for a path, you know? Can you justify savings of between 1.4 and 1.9 million? Your contingency account is about 720,000. If you can carry over 700,000 of that, you've gone a long way towards it, but you still need about another, you know, $1 million or so. So, to generate $1 million, you'd have to have 5% savings in your combination of either expenditure or increased revenues than what you budgeted. So it's tight. I mean, that's a, you're taking on more risk. But I think the fact that you have a really good reserve account is the reason why you can take on a little more risk. You know, if you didn't have a reserve account, then you'd probably want to be much more conservative. But the fact that you have maintained that reserve account and actually increased it over the last several years gives you the opportunity to see how this unfolds. And I think the first checkpoint will be in November, when the property tax rate levy gets confirmed, December, when the audit's done, you'll know a lot better halfway through. And you may want to hold off on things that are one-time expenses that you can defer until you get to that point. I would like to point out, there is a correction I'd like to make in the report, and it's on page four. And it shows that in 2014-15, the difference between revenues and expenditures would be about 2.2 million, and that's not correct because there's 1.3 million dollars in the ambulance financing that was not included in revenue. So it's actually about $900,000. So, if you look at that page, that's really the 900,000, you know, the 400,000, the 750,000, plus a million, that's where you have to have those kinds of savings in order to break even. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? We'll start over on this end. Alan?
None comes to mind right now, Bob. Thank you for the report. I fear we'll be looking at a lot of things coming up.
None at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Normally, we budget very conservatively for revenues.
Yes.
What is the likelihood that we will be able to make up a fair chunk of that with the conservative estimate in the revenues?
Well, you do budget conservatively. And, you know, like I say, at this point, it's hard to know if you're going to be able to make those targets. But I think, like I say, the first checkpoint's going to be November, December, when you get the audit and you get the property tax statement. That'll give you a real good idea of where you stand. And at that point, if you're not, you know, breaking even on your revenues and expenditures, then you can make a mid-course adjustment. But like I say, you've got a lot of ability to take the time to thoughtfully consider that. It's not going to be, you know, a panic situation because you've got those really good reserves, which is why you have the really good reserves. So, you know, in the past, we've pointed out that there could be shortfalls coming up, and you haven't had those because you've, you have been conservative, and then you have managed the expenses really tightly. So, you know, I would say, based on your history, I would just, and you've got a hold-the-line budget here, I'd just wait until that November, December, and then see what happens.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Are you suggesting maybe that we, in maybe one of our planning sessions, we take a step back and start analyzing this a little better as to where we can get savings, or where we can, what we should, if we have to cut things, what we should be cutting ahead of time here, so not the last-minute crunch time?
Well, what I would do is identify areas that you may be able to hold off on in the budget, defer spending it until you know where you are in November, December. I don't think you're at the point right now where you need to go in and start making wholesale reductions in programs because right now, these are all projections. And in the past, you've actually done very well when the audits finally come out. But I would look really carefully at what things might be deferred, and then, like I say, look at that audit very closely in December to see how, in fact, it did come out this current year.
I realize we're in good shape, but, you know, I'm one of these people that I don't want to wait too long and-
Right.
-before we, it just, I mean, I just want to make sure we know what's going on.
Yeah. Well, I think the fact that your reserve accounts are not quite double what your policy is, gives you that flexibility. And so I think, you know, the good work that you've done through the last several years has set you up where you can take a little more time, be a little more thoughtful in how, if you do need to reduce. But like I say, if you get down in November and December and that audit shows that there's a major difference between revenues and expenditures, then that would be the time to have that conversation, I would think.
Thank you.
I think it's important to remember, too, that if we're sitting on a 49% to 38% reserves and we're cutting services, see how that could look to the public, that we're, you know, we have, we've created a kind of a 25% goal of reaching down to that eventually over time.
Yep.
But I think we'd have to be careful not to, not to hold too tight sometimes. Anyways, thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next item of business, we have a report from YCAP Executive Director Lee Honors Means. Lee?
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. I'm asked me to be here tonight to talk about, a little bit about the homeless issue, and it's been making all the headlines from lately. And we've had a number of community meetings last week. I don't know how many of you were at the evening meeting. I think quite a few of you, I recognize, saw you in the audience. So, I hope that I'm not going to repeat myself too much. And, so, I'm just going to give you a little bit of a background on the homeless issue. When I came eight years ago, I was told over and over and over again, both here and in Newburgh, we don't have any homeless problem. We're, that's in Portland. We don't have a problem here. It took, starting the tenure plan to end homelessness in Yamhill County, and the first real homeless count that we did about four or five years ago, to actually make people aware that there was a homeless problem. Before, they had been just counting the number of shelter beds, and so every year, the homeless count was about the same, 250, 260 homeless people, because that's how many shelter beds there are in this county. It didn't count the woeful lack of shelter beds. It didn't count all the people on waiting lists. It didn't count anything else. It just turned in the number of people that were actually being sheltered at any one point in time. HUD requires us to do a shelter count, or a homeless count, the last week in January. We can pick the day. We have tended to do it on a Wednesday. And the first one we did was kind of a shock to people. And even then, we only counted about 600 people. I should have put that front and center here. In each count, you have to realize that when we count, we're counting one morning, just the people we can find. So, that's not very, I mean, it's not a very good representation. And we never know what the weather's going to be like, if there's snow on the ground, if we, just one year, they had, we had a big flood, and all the homeless camps were gone, basically. We were out there. Last year, the homeless count was 1,211 people. Of that, and you have to realize that a good share of these, the homeless people are actually working full-time jobs. We don't get to count them. In this, this past year, of the people that we, that answered the questions on the back of the count, 44 were working full-time. Another 65 were working part-time or temporary. If they're working, it's very hard for us to count them because they're not out where we can count them. So, you can guess that there's a huge percentage more homeless than we count. This year's count was 901, and we do not have a breakdown yet because there's something wrong in the database on the state's side that we can't get a breakout of just our homeless. But I do have it for last year. As I said, last year, we counted 1,211. We counted that many because we had great participation from the homeless liaisons in the schools. Of the 1,211, 500 were children under the age of 18. It's a huge percentage. It was 45, almost 45% children under the age of 18. And of those, 41 were unaccompanied children, no adults in their life. They were just street kids hanging out. There's a huge problem coming in the near future. It's, I mean, we're already seeing it. We're already seeing the homeless stepping out on the, sitting on the streets. The signs are now, not just Portland, they're Baker and Third Street. We are raising a generation of children that are not getting educated properly. You cannot go to school and keep up with school if you're moving three times in the school year. The one thing that struck me when I was in California, I volunteered as a GED coach, and I was sent to the city jail, or the county jail to work with people that wanted to get their GEDs in the jail. And one young man, I just, out of frustration, finally said, I was working with him on his math, and I finally said, what the heck were you doing in the third grade? You don't know your multiplication tables. You cannot do any math past the third grade without knowing your multiplication tables. You simply have to memorize them. He said, we were homeless, we moved five times, I was in five different schools in the third grade, and he said, I fell so far behind that I dropped out of school by the seventh grade. He didn't even get to high school. We have a, we know our high school dropout numbers. We don't know the number of kids that drop out before they even get to high school. That's creating a huge business problem. We don't have people who are ready to take jobs. They need a lot of schooling, they need a lot of training, they need to know that they just simply have to show up and be dressed properly. So, we need to do something about the homeless project, problem in the county. And unfortunately, there is no easy, easy way to deal with it because there are, there is a different reason for the homelessness in every person you talk to. And there is no one solution that's going to solve this problem. I kind of lump the homeless into about three general areas. The first area is those homeless that are seniors, that are disabled, that are mentally disabled, people who will never be able to be self-sufficient on their own. And just as an example, we had an 87-year-old man who came in and wanted help with his brakes. The, I said, what are we, why are we fixing the brakes on the car of an 87-year-old man? It's because he's sleeping in his car, and he has to move it every night. Why is he sleeping in his car? He's homeless because his wife died, and now he only has one social security check, and he can't pay for a room on that. Our county has a .5 rental vacancy. 5% is considered absolutely critical to have apartments that people can rent and have turnover. We have a .5. We cannot find, even when I get people that have a Section 8 voucher, they can't find a place to live. We are actually sending people out of our county. I just heard from one of the other providers, they had to put one of their domestic violence survivors in Independence because they couldn't find a place that she could afford in our county. Now, getting back and forth from Independence for somebody on low income to a job in Yamhill County is a little bit difficult. I have people all the time who tell me, well, if we build things, we'll get people moving in from out of the county. And I'm here to tell you, that's not a problem. We do not see people coming to this county for services. There aren't enough services. They go to the large metro areas. We do get people that come in from other places, and it, sometimes, and it's because they were in a domestic violence position with an abusive husband in Texas, and they finally got up the nerve to leave, they loaded everything they could in the car- They loaded everything they could in the car. They drove to Yamhill County because she had a sister here that she could stay with, she thought. Sister lived in a rental. Rentals have conditions that say you can't have guests for more than two weeks. And then she had to move. So, we, the, the solution is that we need more housing. The solution is we need more support services to get people stabilized. And the solution is we need more jobs at a mid-level, lower-level economic that we can get people started into the business situation with. Those are big areas. They're not easy to approach. So, I don't know how much more you want to know. So, maybe I'll just ask you, what would you like to know from here? Do you have other questions? I'm trying to give you a little background.
I had one.
Yes.
In particular, and
Commissioner Rudin.
Thank you for the presentation, Lee. And I've always thought that, that we were just now experiencing the latest, greatest fallout from the great recession that we've been through for the last seven years. Someone, where it gets people on a downward spiral, and it takes a number of years before they really hit homelessness. And it's just a theory. I don't know if it's true. It's, what's your feeling on that?
There has always been homelessness. I would be willing to wager that in the sixteen hundreds, there was homelessness. There will always be homeless because we have people, the, the second category, we have the, the people that will always need to be helped in some way. We have the people who fall into homelessness for some major reason. They lose a job. They have a major heart attack or a stroke. Many of them will be back out of homelessness in a couple of years with a little stabilization and a little help. Then there's, the third group is the chronic homeless, the alcoholic, drug addiction. A lot of our vets are actually in this area where they've come back with post-traumatic stress, and they self-medicate with alcohol. There's the generational poverty people that, it really takes a lot of effort to get them out of homelessness. We did see a huge increase on our waiting list to get in. We, we run three transitional shelters. The, they can stay in the transitional shelter for up to three, six months while we work with them on their finances, while we work with them on what's your job skills. We connect them with services. We connect them with JobSource. We work with them to get them stabilized. During the height of the recession, we had over fifty families on the waiting list to get into our shelters that can hold eleven families. Right now, we're running between fifteen and twenty families on our waiting list. Before the recession hit, we were running fifteen to twenty families on the waiting list. So, it went up. We come back down to about where we were before the recession. I don't see a stop to that. We're, we, we are having a lot of problems stabilizing people in this county.
What prompted me on that question to you was that your statement on, we can expect an onslaught of homelessness now, of more than what we experienced in the past or today.
We can expect to see more of it because we're more aware of it now. And, and because I think that some of the homeless are gaining a voice after the Occupy, the various Occupy where, whatever cities that you're talking about. Though, some of the homeless watch television. They see social media. They have gained a voice. And so, we're seeing more of them. They were here before. In a rural county, it's easy to hide homelessness. Many of the homeless are very embarrassed about where they are. They don't come easily in to ask for help. So, we don't see them. And that's what was, was the case when I came to work here. I knew there was homeless here, but I kept getting told there was no homeless. And it's because they hide very well in rural areas. They go camp in the woods. They sleep in chicken houses, you know. It, there's just a lot of places for them to hide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you not just for your time tonight, but for your time the other night, and also the time you've dedicated over the last, I think, seven years. And so, we've learned you're retiring, and so
Yes.
the whole council wants to thank you very much for your service. I found the, the discussion panel on, the other night to be extremely informative. And I took a lot of notes that I want to share with our council, and as well, at the moment, also to thank our city that together. I thought it was extremely well-done, informational. We also had a lot of department heads that were there, which I greatly appreciated.
Yes.
Since you were part of that panel, of course, I'm not going to recount the, what I learned to you. But as a lead-up to kind of my question, one piece of information that we got over and over, the takeaway message, was that our biggest hindrance is lack of affordable housing, lack of transitional housing, and last, lack of emergency housing. And I think that the whole panel kind of said that to the audience over and over again.
Absolutely.
My question for you at this moment is if you could give this council one action item in the next year, what would that action item be?
Wow.
Well, as you said, there's not one answer.
There is not one answer.
So, what we're really trying to do is explore options.
Okay, so, one of the things that I think this council could do immediately is look at some of the ordinances and, and things that limit the ability for different people to create housing. One of them is a, a limit on the gospel mission to seventeen beds. So, they're turning people away every single night. Even on fairly nice nights, they're turning people away. That was put in place, admittedly, that there was a lot of concern about that. People really worry about the kind of people that are going to be moving in next door. But I think that they have managed to help the community around them understand that homeless people are just people, and it's not necessarily going to be a dangerous adding beds. And I think that they've remodeled that place in such a way that they could take more people. So, that's one thing you might look at right away. There are some other planning-type things that might be looked at. I just looked at getting a, I was offered from a winery, a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot mobile home in really great shape. They'd only used it as a tasting room. And I looked at putting it at the back of our property, at the YCap building on Riverside Drive. And by the time I got done, I realized, well, first of all, it, it has to be not a mobile home. It has to be manufactured, which means it has to be on a foundation with none of the movable things underneath it. It has to not have people stay overnight in it. And I figured out how much it was going, a free house was going to cost me and not be able to use it for emergency or transitional housing. Decided that maybe it wasn't a good choice at this time. So, and, and there's those kinds of things that could ease up some of this problem. Does that help?
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Kelly.
Kelly was at the meetings.
I was at the meeting. I found it absolutely fascinating. It was an extremely good meeting, and kudos to Martha for
Yes, I want to reiterate that because I've been here eight years. This is the first time I've really seen the community coming together. And, and it was kind of led by Martha. And the other one is Dave Hoggleberg, who's jumped in on this. And I'm seeing a lot of talk now, and that's the good news.
I guess the only question I would bring up is what I brought up that night. Land seemed to come up a great deal, and land in town, which seems unlikely to me as being an option. But do you have any other suggestions within the county that might be prospects? I've heard Landfield might have some land or something. Would that even be realistic?
You know, the, we looked at having our building built outside the county limits. And there's a lot of county regulations also. And, and there's a lot of fire regulations that make it really hard to do. So, and Elise, you weren't at the Providers Forum on the next day after the, after the meeting with Martha. Martha called, but we had a Providers Meeting with the State Department, Oregon Housing and Community Services. And basically, Elise was telling them, there simply is no land. They, they look for land constantly to build some more house, low-income housing. And she cannot find land in this county. So, if you know of land that could become available, I think we'd all love to know about it.
Thank you again for all your work. You're fabulous.
Larry. Yeah, thank you. Because we, we're all aware that we will always have, the homeless will always be with us to some extent. But I'm, I'm really proud of how that you're able to pull the community together because it is a community project. And we need to, we need to work together to reduce the amount we have. So, thank you.
Yeah. It's, I think we are at a time that, this, this is a time for action. The, the state put in their budget a hundred million in bonds to build facilities in rural areas. And it's, it's, if it passes, which is the first big if, it, it will probably, the way we've looked at it at our CAPO, which is a statewide association of cap agencies, it will probably add about twelve-to-fifteen-hundred units a year for five years in rural areas. That's not a huge amount. But on the other hand, if this, if this county comes together now, and if we're organized, we could get a cut of that money, and we could do something, you know. We could start, we could make a start. So, having, having these people start talking now is a big piece of that. And starting to make plans now is a big piece of it. So, I applaud, I applaud you, and I'm a little sorry that I'm going out at this, this moment. I think there's an opportunity to really make a difference here. So, I applaud the whole com, commission, City Council for stepping up and starting a conversation on this. Because I understand Elise Huey is going to be here in a couple of weeks, too.
Hey, Kevin.
Yes.
I had one more comment.
Go ahead.
Everybody else has had their. It just seems, you know, we hear of these instances where you almost get the feeling that the systems are stacked against the homelessness, right? The established ordinances and laws that are, that are time-tested, for sure, put into place for good reasons. But it, it's like, we've been talking about that, you know, as, as far as policymakers at this level, that there's got to be some changes made. And I was, you know, we, like you said, about putting the mobile manufactured home on the back of the county property out there. And all of a sudden, you had three, four, five obstacles in your way to get it done, when in the first place, it was a great idea.
Sounded like it. Seemed like it.
That would truly help people.
Yeah.
Right? And then, all of a sudden, bam, can't make it happen. So, that's, I think we need to refresh some policies. And it's going to take some controversy to do that, for sure. But the time has come, and I think that's probably the only place that we can make progress. Because there's a lot of willing hearts and minds and hands that are willing to help if somehow there's a way provided through the policymakers.
I think that also, as a City Council, you could have an influence on the state legislature. And right now, they are considering some changes, much-needed changes. Changes to TANF, where right now, we work hard. We get somebody stabilized. We get them in a job. They have small children. The minute they start work, they cut the childcare benefits. The, the people, they end up being better off not taking the job than to go back to work. Because the minute they take a job, the benefits are cuts so that they're making less than they did not working. That's a real barrier to, to particularly single women with children to going back to work and getting on with their lives. So, those are also things that as a City Council, you can push with legislators at the, at the state level. You have a voice there, too.
Thank you, Lee. And on behalf of the city, really appreciate your time and service you've given to this county and to this community. In seven years, you've really done a lot. It's kind of amazing, I think, that Capitol project, where we used to be over here down the street, which is now a transit station, you know. You've really come a long way. Thank you for your leadership and service.
Thank you. I want to just say that this is probably, and I've, I say it a lot, this is the most collaborative county I've ever worked in. This, this is really an amazing place. And you are very lucky to have the, the providers you have here. They work together hand-in-hand. We help each other. The community jumps in and helps. It's, it's just an amazing county, and we're very lucky to be part of it, so. And I've been very lucky to be here for eight years, so thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Up next on the agenda, we have, let's see, what are we calling this? We have a permit request for a noise permit for the Oregon Crusaders. And we have a guest, Mike Quillen, Executive Director of the Oregon Crusaders, is here to speak to us about this permit.
Thank you for having me here today, councilors and mayor. Is mayor here today? Is the mayor here?
No.
Okay.
Just me.
Yes, I'm the, I'm a resident of McMinnville. Live at, on, up on Orchard V Road. And I'm also the Executive Director of the Oregon Crusaders. We're a performing arts group, youth performing arts group, based out of Portland. I brought with me my, our show coordinator, Wayne Evans, who lives in Beaverton. Last year, we brought the Drums of Fire, Drum and Bugle Corps Show to McMinnville at the, at McMinnville High School. And it was very much a success for us. And I think the, the community, and those that went to it, enjoyed it, had a good time, and thought that it was a worthwhile event. We're bringing it back again this year. This year, it's also a Rose Festival sanctioned event. So, there's a lot of publicity and also a Rose Festival sanctioned event, so there's a lot of publicity and, you know, promotion through the Rose Festival this year. The event is pretty much going to be about the same format as last year, with a start time of 7:00 and running till 10:00 PM. Last year, we did the mass handing out of flyers and meeting residents in the nearby area to alert them of the music that was going to be playing late, and as well as to inform them of the event. And I think that went pretty well. There were, there might have been a couple of complaints, but I don't think there was anything major that came of that. So, we're asking for a permit again for this year.
Well, we received no complaints, but I've heard a lot of positive things about the event. So, any questions or anyone on the council, Kelly?
Just time and when you're, it's only for a few hours in the afternoon, right?
It's in the evening. The event starts at 7:00, and it goes till 10:00. We're usually done a little before 10:00, as far as like actually playing, you know, instruments. It's probably over by 9:30, quarter to 10:00.
Well, it sounds like a fabulous thing to go listen to, but...
Yeah.
Larry?
No, thank you for bringing it back. I think it's a benefit to the community.
You're welcome.
Alan?
Notifying the neighbors in advance is critical to your success and lack of complaints. And I'd really like to see that continue. And in the past, they've always kept their commitments to notifying very well the surrounding property owners, and that needs to continue, for sure. And it's an excellent program, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we're planning on doing that again.
Excellent. Remy?
Thank you very much. I'm not only in my ward, but in my neighborhood, and so we were able to enjoy it last year. And as, like many of my other neighbors, we all were brought out by the music. And I don't know of anybody that had any complaints. Of course, no, nobody had any complaints. I think everybody just enjoyed it. So, I thought it was great.
We had great support from the Police Department with traffic, and, you know, because we had got permits for all of that. And I think the mayor went to the event and enjoyed it. And he's planning on going again this year, so appreciate the support.
All right, thanks. So unless there's any objection, we'll direct Candace to write up a letter.
I'd like to.
Outlining the council has heard his petition and grants permission for the competition to take place. And we really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances, we have ordinance number 4987, amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance and three-mile lane plan development overlay. So, Ron, what do you got for us?
Well, from time to time, the Planning Department occasionally identifies small housekeeping items that would provide additional clarity or accuracy in the McMinnville zoning ordinance, such as the nature of the ordinance that you have before you this evening. There's a memo in your packet that describes the nature of these specific code amendments. On March 19th, 2015, the McMinnville Planning Commission met and reviewed these amendments and staff's recommendation, and then voted unanimously to recommend that the council approve these. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Larry?
No questions, no.
No questions.
I had a couple. Alan, do you have any?
No, not really.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the questions I had on Exhibit A, I think it's page 73 in the packet, there's a lot that's being deleted. Could you explain a little bit about what's being removed and why it was, why it was removed? I realize it's housekeeping, and some of the stuff, I think the memo really talked more about the sign ordinances, but there's parts in here that deal with residential use and not even about signs necessarily, but just...
Or residential facilities. There is a residential facility definition in the zoning ordinance, so we're, actually, it's in two places, so we're recommending that it be eliminated from one place where it does not belong, and it remains in another location. And the residential facilities are to allow living units of four, six, or more handicapped individuals to live as one housekeeping unit with one shared kitchen, that it does include staff. So, we are also asking that that be allowed to be a conditional use process in the R1, R2, and R3 zones. That's really it for the residential facility. The rest of the amendments are mostly streamlining in terms of process, or in one case, there's a typo.
I also noticed on page 37 on that same, under bed and breakfasts, we're removing any reference to a specific fee amount. And it sounds like you're just, I'm an appropriate, it's in a rephrase as an appropriate fee, I guess, is kind of what's being replaced there. But what was the reasoning behind that, of removing the actual stated amount of the fee?
That would allow the Planning Department to be able to accept amendments by the council to change that fee without having to bring back before you another amendment to change the zoning ordinance to reflect that fee.
Right.
And then, the streamlining of the process is, right now, the ordinance requires that the applicant for those facilities request of the city that their permit be extended. What we actually do in process is that we notify them to let them know that it's about to expire and invite them to apply for that renewal. So, we're asking that the ordinance reflect the more user-friendly approach that we currently take in the Planning Department.
Okay. So, kind of codify and practice.
Exactly.
Excellent. All right. So, this is one that Candace has to read to us. Unless there's any other questions? Okay. Candace, could you please read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance number 4987, an ordinance adopting housekeeping amendments to certain chapters of the McMinnville zoning ordinance number 3380, and the three-mile lane planned development overlay ordinance number 4572.
You did it so well. Can you do it again?
Because I like it so much. Ordinance number 4987, an ordinance adopting housekeeping amendments to certain chapters of the McMinnville zoning ordinance number 3380, and the three-mile lane planned development overlay ordinance number 4572.
Thank you. Rose, could you please poll the council?
Council Grabby?
Yes.
Council Menke?
Aye.
Council Gruber?
Yes.
Council Yoder?
Yes.
And Council Cusack?
Yes. Let us know the ordinance passed, the council unanimously. When I move on to advice and information, I think, Larry, you had something you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I just want you to be aware, at our last Parkway meeting, has to do with the bypass, they're putting together a tour of the bypass. And so, I'm not quite sure what size bus they're going to have or need, but they're hoping that every council can send one or two people with the committee. They don't want just everybody to show up. So, be thinking about it, because that's going to have, it's supposed to happen in May. And we need, so be thinking about who we'd like to go and how many we can get in. Hopefully, they will be contacting City Hall or something about that, so.
Rose, can you give the date? Can you give the date?
I'll send you.
Okay.
Well, they were talking about doing it on the regular scheduled meeting day, which is the third Thursday, but I'm not sure if they are still stuck with that date.
Would it be in early morning time?
It'd probably be like a 9:00 start time.
Is it going to be a four-wheel-drive bus?
Yeah.
I think they're getting...
Like, ready for prime time.
I think they're getting one from the Yamhill County Transit.
Oh, okay.
One of their big, trying to get one of their big buses, so. But they don't want to have to take two buses, because they'd like to get everybody into one. But they would like representatives from every, from the communities there that are part of it.
Excellent. Thanks, Larry. Kelly, did you have anything, if I remember?
Yeah, I do have something from YCOM. We passed the YCOM budget this last week. It's a 6% increase. So, right now, we're at about 3/4 of a million, so we'll be paying a bit more. As a part of that, there was also another agreement made that about $270,000 would come out of the YCOM budget and be separated out on an annual basis for the next five years to be put into a radio budget. And the county basically is taking over and becoming in charge of that particular budget. The good thing about this is it's a static amount. It's not going to change for the next five years, unless for some reason negotiations change it, but it doesn't look like it right now. And it will also provide, as a part of that, $270,000 for maintenance and whatever else is necessary for the radios that are on the towers. $40,000 of that each year will be set aside for capital improvements that we anticipate within 10 years. So, that's what's happening at YCOM.
Excellent. Busy. Wow. Alan? No airport commission?
No airport commission coming up. It was scheduled, and now we don't because lack of an agenda. So...
Somebody lost the agenda?
No, not enough items on the agenda. But we're rescheduled for July this year.
Thanks. Remy?
Yes, thank you. So, again, I want to really thank our city manager, who put together an incredible panel on homelessness on April 22nd. Council Menke was there as well, the mayor was there, our chief of police, the fire chief was there, Doug Montgomery was there, you were there. Head of Parks and Rec, head of the library was there. So, I really felt like the city was well-represented. I've been trying to learn a lot about this issue, and for as much as I thought I'd learned, I was shocked by a lot of the information that I thought would be important to share with the council. As Lee shared tonight, there's a large percentage of people working full-time and part-time that are homeless. Almost half, or 45% of our homeless population is under 18. Housing is currently serving over 2,100 families per month. There were three and a half years, I'm sorry, these are a little jumbled, but they're the notes in the order that I took them. So, the, for three and a half years, the waiting list for Section 8 housing had been closed. It reopened in August of 2013, and over 1,000 people are on that waiting list again already. About 30% of our homeless are disabled. About 15% of our homeless are elderly. There's also a Community Connect event on May 15th, in which the services will be coming together, so something we can put in our calendars as another learning opportunity. As I already said, it was stated over and over again by everybody on the panel that our biggest hindrance is lack of affordable housing, lack of transitional housing, and lack of emergency housing. I think that that's something that our council really needs to take a look at, especially as we kind of recently did this huge land review and found that we had adequate land for all these things, you know, industrial, commercial, residential, when the information that I feel like I'm getting right now is that we don't actually have enough residential, because our occupancy rates are so high. And I will not try to recount the explanation of kind of how that trickle-down effect, but leave it that there is one. If you're interested, again, in some more educational material, look up Malcolm Gladwell, Million Dollar Murray, New York Times article to read. Do, 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 excuse me, I'm just skip a couple of these. There were a number of things that were talked about, about what can be done. Finding creative ways, low-cost, no-cost ways to help supporting housing at every level was the number-one thing that was discussed. And so, whether that's through zoning or policy, but there are actually low-cost items that this council can take on. And then, something that I wasn't aware of, and that then I saw in the paper, and I thought I would just take a moment to read, because even if this isn't something that anybody here can do, certainly, it's something that's worth sharing with your friends and neighbors, and perhaps we can find some people that can become part of the youth outreach program, which is taking applications for their safe shelter host homes. This program provides emergency shelter for up to 21 days to 11- to 17-year-old runaways or homeless youth in Yamhill County. Applicants are required to pass background checks and complete biographical information. Basically, both sides of the parties are screened. And if you are helping homeless youth, you are not necessarily helping drug-addicted youth. You are not necessarily helping youth that have any violent or criminal histories. You can just be helping somebody whose life circumstances created a very poor one for them at the moment. And I would restate that it was also emphasized that we really don't see most of our homeless. The homeless that we're seeing, the homeless that have kind of catapulted homelessness into the public sphere at this moment, this discussion, these are really the chronic homeless that are living in the downtown area. But the majority of our homeless are sleeping in cars, they're sleeping at family members, but that's not necessarily a permanent residence. They are sleeping in the woods, they're sleeping wherever they can find a place to lay their head, but they are still homeless. So, that's what I wanted to share.
Thanks, Remy. All right. Chief Scale, anything going on over there in the woods?
Oops, sorry. Today, Doug Cummins, officer with us, for about 30 years, or over 30 years, just about, announced that he will be retiring July 1. So, we will be, he's had a long, long career and done a massive amount of things, whether it's with emergency management, volunteering at the fire department, and doing CERT for the Police Department. He did announce his retirement, and it's well-deserved. So, that's what I'm sharing with you today.
Wow, thank you. I was just learning how to ride a bike when he got started, so.
I would just like to remind the councilors that our Budget Committee meeting is coming soon. It's the evening of May 13. We have decided to start the meeting at 6:00 this year, instead of 7:00, with the hopes of giving everyone home a little bit earlier. And I'll send an email around to remind everyone of that. The budget documents or flash drive, whichever you will be receiving, actually will be distributed this Friday. So, that will give you about two weeks to review the budget. And as always, you know, let me know if you have any questions prior to the meeting on May 13.
Thank you. Ron, anything else new? All right, thanks. Rose?
Yes. I talked with the folks at the Yamhill County Gospel Mission, and Tim Phillips said that he could accommodate a tour on Tuesday, 12, just before your City Council meeting at 5:15. So, I had to know, and that would replace the Thursday meeting. So, we just have two meetings left. So, please let me know if you're ready to attend. 5:15, maybe 12, and I'll send out a...
Bye. Thank you. Candace?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. City Manager, what do you got?
Fantastic job, President.
Oh, thanks.
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
No flowers or anything?
[laughing]
All right. Well, I haven't, I didn't beat Larry's record of 25-minute meetings, but I hope you all have a great night. We're adjourned. I do this at work a lot.